And your dad, if you sit and save the other four stand.
Congratulations to the flag. My flag is waving to the flag of my United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, righteous, under God, invisible, but worthy of justice for all. Open a meeting to Communist Republic at this time. Anybody wish to drop the vote and they do so. Joe, I guess you're back on the floor.
Great. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Rivers and the Village Board for welcoming me tonight. And I'm available to answer any questions. With me, we have Rick Andres, who's an RNF engineer for Verizon Wireless. I'm a consultant for Verizon Wireless. Just a little background, I'm sure you've just for the last couple of months, I know the mayor's associate on our dealings. We originally reached out back in October last year, interested in co-locating Verizon's antennas, twelve antennas with associated cables on the water tank itself. When we visited the tank back in late December and did some due diligence where the tank manufacturer, there's a couple of issues that were posed with the tank, mainly the access to get the cables from the ground all the way up, where we can mount the antennas. It just turned out to be, at the end of the day, the only way we could really make the tank work is to run the cables on the outside of the tank and put the antennas toward the edge of the tank, which is still an option that's out there. Then we kind of came to a decision and said it might even be easier just to build a tower at the location. It's an industrial zone piece of property, as you know, it's an industrial area, there's already a couple of structures existing in the area. The advantages of doing that, it doesn't leave your tank alone, it doesn't mess with your tank in terms of having Verizon on the tank, which again, isn't a bad thing. It gives the opportunity for other carriers to co-locate on the tower, which I think the tank, after Verizon, if we're able to make it work, it would be limited for use for other carriers. So the village with proposing a new tower, yes, it's a structure, it takes up a little bit more of a property, looking at least a 50 by 50 area, which is considerably less huge, because Verizon likes to go 100 by 100. But I think we consider that to do a lattice-type communications power. I can show you pictures of what one looks like, if I've well seen it before. For Verizon, they put an equipment shelter, 12 by 30 shelter on the ground, and they run their power and telephone through it. As far as the height is, we need to be about 20 or 30 feet above the water tanks, but less than 195 feet, so we're gonna have to lay the tower. And that's really the background of it. So right at this point now, speaking with the mayor, there's a couple of issues or questions that arose when he did the speech here last, or two meetings ago. And certainly, one of the things that he asked us to do, which we did this afternoon, was look at two other locations in the village that may be suitable for Verizon Wireless to put up a tower. One of those locations was the old trailer park out on Lake Avenue and Lake Street, and the second location was a sewer treatment plant. We looked at all those locations, we had our computers out, we plotted them out, and I could, I guess I'll heed to Rick, they're really not as, do not work as well for Verizon Wireless for several reasons, and if you want to take it from there.
Yeah, we're not running predictions or whatever, but the two items that we face, one is that we can't send a whole bunch of signal over into Vermont, because even though it's Verizon on both sides, this is a Verizon partnership market versus a 100% Verizon on the other side. So we have an agreement that we don't blast signals over into Vermont and vice versa. And also due to FCC regulations, we can't, you know, we're very limited as to how much energy we can push over into Canada. So because of those two things, and those two properties that we looked at today are pretty much right in the corner where the, so almost 270 degrees of our coverage footprint is locked out from us, so we almost have a sound where we can only transmit over 90-degree area versus the water tank location where one sector would shoot down onto the village and we'd be able to control that signal from shooting into Canada. And then the two other sectors would point south down the river and then west back to, connect back through Champlain. So we would get the full 360 degrees coverage from the water tank location versus the 90-degree.
And it's about, once the crow flies, it's all better than three quarters of a mile north northeast from the water tank location, which is, and this technology is actually a good size distance away. And we also identified an area on the property, the water tank partial, that would be kind of even with the tank in its location-wise, and we draw it up and do an engineering layout of it, but we completely put it in a location that's not going to interfere with any of the maintenance of the tank, any of the pipes underground. A little bit more due diligence would need to be done, but we have copies of all the plans, and we can kind of skip out of the location, so.
Is that it, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, the, I don't know if this is, they need to talk about the rent options or not, or...
That's part.
One of the, the mayor has, when we originally did the proposal for the water tank, we talked about rent being $1,500 a month. Then I backtracked, it was in my era that I did that, but we can't do that for a new tower because of the expense to build a new tower. But we provided two options, alternatives to do, either one, do $1,000 a month and we can lease a 50 by 50, and if someone else was on the tower, the village would get some revenue, come on dog a month, or Verizon can just lease its shelter space and tower. If another carrier comes on, they would lease from the Verizon for the tower space, they have to do a separate lease with the village. The advantage of doing that is you're dealing directly with the carrier itself, you have a little bit more control over the deal. I mean, you're not going to get as much as Verizon should, you know, I don't want to throw out numbers here, but if someone comes in and, you know, maybe $400 or $500 a month, it's probably common for a 10 by 20 or 20 by 20 lease area for another carrier. And there's enough adequate room to do there, so I mean, that's something you guys could talk about, and I don't know which route you want to take on that, but at the end of the day, it may have more incentive, I mean, there's no guarantee how many carriers come in, but there's an, you know, obviously, there's a need in this area. You have T-Mobile out there, you have AT&amp;T, Simular, you have RCC in this area, right? Sprint, Xcel, so there's three or four other carriers that could use the site. Maybe they come in three weeks from now, or maybe they come in three years from now or never, but they're still viable location.
What's the ballpark figure to build a tower, to put up a tower like you?
Ballpark to build the, not including the radio equipment and the shelter, to put up the tower, all the pre-due diligence that goes into it, you know, our time and all that, I mean, anywhere, probably around $215,000. You know, it depends, I mean, the steel now is expensive, and that site, it's not like you have to build a mile of road or run power, it's a pretty, it's a relatively simple site to build. Then as far as the equipment that Verizon puts in and out of the tower, you'd be looking at another couple hundred thousand dollars, so. At the end of the day, it could be upwards of $3,000, $4,000, $500,000 total investment for the site.
The only other question I think you answered, I just want to make sure that down the road, if we go with this, that there's going to be an opportunity to maybe expand it, you know? It looks like there will be, that's a real item.
Verizon, I mean, we're going to build the site adequate enough to, and it's going to all be part of any resolutions that the village has. But usually Verizon builds its towers a whole with company, three other carriers, three other typical installations. There's enough property there where either there's enough room to locate in Verizon's compound, 50 by 50 outside the compound. I mean, Verizon, as far as the carriers, they'll take up the biggest area. But T-Mobile, they don't build shelter, for instance, they may only take up a 10 by 20 location, just put a cement pad down and equipment cabinets. But I think that could all be, you could set certain parameters on that in terms of either from a zoning process or a, you know, even through the leasing process, that stuff could be put in there, so you have some assurance of that. There's no guarantees, but, you know, there's some sites you drive around and have every carrier on, and there's some sites that have no carrier. It just depends on when the carriers want to cover an area. Sometimes when a carrier comes on first, they realize that, okay, Verizon's trying to get coverage in there, he might say, we need to get there too.
Are anything negative for the environment or the village residents? Or put it down real quick, just?
I could categorically say no. I mean, there's, Verizon does its whole array of Phase One environmentalists, all do all their due diligence as far as the antennas. And Rick could, I'll speak as a layman, but Rick could kind of answer more detail, but the FCC, when it came out with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, there's strict rules in the act based on years of studies that if the carrier or the provider is within certain thresholds, they are, they're preempted, meaning a village or a town cannot deny from its own perspective Verizon or any other carrier for that matter because of health concerns. If the threshold is, I'll just use an arbitrary number, is 100, usually your typical carrier is at like, what, .01 of that?
Yeah, somewhere around five percent.
So I mean, it's very, I mean, all this stuff, you know, Verizon would run a report, there's the type of, any, all these fluorescent lights are emitting electromagnetic field, your toaster does, and there's no health risks associated with it.
So there's nothing negative then?
I mean, you know, the, I mean, it's the only, the things that come up, I'll just speak from experience, is the question that always comes up is aesthetics. Obviously, I like to show you pictures of the typical. I mean, this is just a typical lattice tower, it's a very common type of tower. I think I emailed you this, Mayor, yeah? I think I will. And here's just more of a close-up of what the shelter looks like there.
Yeah, so we have one up on 276, it's a microwave tower, but.
And here's, you know, what typical antennas look like on top of the tower.
Have you done any research in LA areas in the town of Champlain where you might locate a tower?
We've...
And I guess, what drew you to the Village of Ariza's Point specifically?
Specifically was the existing structure. Verizon Wireless tries to co-locate on an existing structure, we originally targeted this area because there was an existing structure that we could place antennas on.
In our water?
A water tank, yes. Actually, originally it was the old water tank, we, I didn't even know until I drove up here that we noticed there was a new water tank. And that's what you targeted on originally, right? Because it's just, it's just more palatable to the community, that we can co-locate and search, so that's why we're here. And now, we've kind of went down this road, we've, the village and Verizon have spent some time and money on looking at this, and this is just another option now. Instead of co-locating on the tank, we'd still like to, you know, so far the village has been great to work with, and if we can put something on village property and the red, the village gets the benefit of it, as well as providing essential services to the area. I mean, obviously, it's right across the street, Cham, the town of Champlain, it's not that it can't work, we're just kind of here now.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because like Route 276 is a, is a pretty high location, I don't know if that makes any difference. You know, I mean, if you're, how does it, would it enhance the service in the town of Champlain at the, like on Interstate 87? Is that, you know, that's a pretty highly traveled area, and they get limited, if any, tower service there at the Port of Ventura in Champlain? Is this going to enhance their capability?
No, this wouldn't get over that part.
This wouldn't get that far.
You guys are not on that tower up on the bridge road? I know they've got the, there's some cell phone service on that tower.
We have a site in the village of Champlain, if we ask them that.
Yeah, it's probably on the bridge road. Yeah. It doesn't, going back... Going back to 276, you're right on the border, so you're limiting your coverage, you know, like if you want to go 360, but up there, you've got 50% of the towers is going to be going into Canada, which you can't do, so, you know.
You could from Mason's Corners. You could go 360, because you'd be, you'd be farther south if you're going through the water tank here.
Then we lose the money on the dollars.
That wouldn't cover, I don't want to say, you're going to have a tower here, and who's it going to service?
This, this village and the roads in and out from northwest.
So what, what is the range then? Let's say, let's suppose you build a tower that's 20 to 30 feet above the water tank, what's the range of coverage?
It'll go really, really good as far west as there's, I don't know the area particularly well, but there's a ridge line that raises up probably 50, 60, 70 feet, you know, it's like an industrial park up there, I would guess roughly halfway between here and Champlain. And then that's about as far as the cover, very, very strong.
And as far north as the border?
Yeah, we have, we would have to physically limit it by, you know, finding downtown to the, you know, decreasing power.
So how about, let's say Route 2 over here?
Same to that, similar, similar power constraints into Vermont as well as Canada.
Right, but in other words, let's take the streets at the northern part of the village, for example, Rose Avenue, would those people be able to access the tower? Are they too close to Vermont and Canada?
No, they'd absolutely be able to.
Okay.
And how far, I mean, if the tower must get a signal from some other tower, right? No?
No, it's all completely, there's, there's a physical T1 line or multiple T1s that are on to the site that is powered individually. So the T1s would actually route the call, calls back to Albany at the switch facility only.
And how far south is the range going to be?
It would probably, well, down the lake, it would go, you know, as far, if you were standing up on the tower, look down the lake, as far as you can see down the lake is how far it would go, but as far as the, you know, the roads and the, to the south, roughly five miles, somewhere between four and a half, five miles.
Where's your next Verizon tower?
One in Champlain and then, you know, built up down the highway, but nothing east of the highway, until you get down to Plattsburgh.
So you want to, I, maybe I don't understand this, but you want to put a tower in the Village of Ariza's Point, and you're saying that you're going to spend up to $500,000? You possibly have one of these sites, and it's only going to service the people in the Village of Ariza's Point? Am I missing something?
I don't know. It seems to be the range that they're telling us the tower.
Yeah, guns.
I don't know, I mean, we've got 2,400 residents in the Village of Ariza's Point, and you're going to spend half a million dollars to put a tower up?
I think that may just, I mean, that's an ar, that's a high-end number, I mean, roughly, it could be a little less, it could be a little more in some instances, but, I mean, when sites are designed, I mean, Verizon is, you know, the Albanese and the urban core centers and Plattsburgh, I mean, it's had sites for 15 years there. This is, some of these areas are sort of the, you know, the last frontier, for lack of a better word. I mean, carriers want to provide service as to as much of the population as possible. I mean, you might have a site in New York City that they spend the same amount of money and it covers 300,000 people. Or a site in somewhere in Franklin County that covers 600 people, but they're still, you know, I'm sure you've bullet driven through some very rural areas and have excellent coverage on your cell phone, that's because it's the provider network.
I noticed that going west this time before, we didn't have coverage in all of New York.
Yeah, a couple of our towers, towers. But when, let's say you were in Vermont, would you hit a Verizon tower in Vermont? With a Verizon telephone, cell phone?
Yeah. I mean, it's no, it's, this is just a unique area, this is a partnership. I mean, I do a lot of work in lower New York, where you're going back and forth between Connecticut and New York, and, I mean, it's a nationwide, it's a nationwide system, it's not just, you know, inclusive of a very specific area.
But similar to Joe's point, I mean, you start out when you build a network, you hit the major pop centers and the corridors that connect them, and then you go out and...
You stand out from that.
Maybe 40,000 or 30,000, eventually you get out to where, you know, actually, 2,000, 2,500 people is, you know, it's a fair, fair population center, I guess, this day, you just, you know, as far as Alex said, sure.
That's trying to fill in, yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so, we don't have, we wouldn't have the roaming charges, then I would guess, right? If we had Verizon and we're close to the border, now we would be picking up a tower from Burlington, the one from Canada, and we'd...
Yeah, the, the local one would be so much stronger that your chances of jumping out to go to the Canadian network would be significantly higher.
So then the house people are traveling through the area also then?
We'd never hit a Burlington tower from here though, because of the distance, right?
That's part of, part of the issue in why we have to limit our power. Most of the sites are capped to the 10-mile radius because of the way that...
Yeah, if you kick a say to the top of Manhattan, you'd ask them, you could see it from right across the lake.
Yeah, so it's conceivable, you know, even as far away as Chillington, you know, we've been past some trouble in Plattsburgh where, you know, because it's nearly lined the site, there's nothing to stop the signal, so it's there, you just can't access it, so. So you might find areas on the west side of the lake where, I've got four bars and I can't make a phone call, because your, you know, your phone is seeing something that's maybe 50 miles away, you just, you can't get out, the system won't let you. So the only way you can fix that is to build local, you know, local sites, you know, all the way down the side of the...
Now, when you look at the site of the water tank, where you're going to need this ground space and to construct the building that's going to obviously service the tower, it's a 50 by 50 area, which side of the tower are we talking about? Where, where will this be located up there?
Right to each corner.
And where will the tower be?
Just that, that corner.
Usually, what we would try to do is if you're going north on Academy Street, it would be in the, you know, the tank would be on your left, and you went to a little gravel road, it would be on the, I guess, yeah, it would be on the north side of the tank, as far back as we can without interrupting the, any pipes or the easements, the underground power or water lines. With the 50 by 50 fenced in area, they usually put the towers in the middle of the 50 by 50 area, and then the shelter, and just if that allows it, it depends on the level of the, so the ground should be right beside it, 12 by 30 shelter and a backup generator to it.
And what have other communities asked you to do to make the, the entire structure building more aesthetically pleasing?
They, you know, painting the, or making the shelter match, it hasn't, and since you're on a site that has a water tank, which has a, I don't know, you described it, cement ground.
Concrete, or concrete, is it composite material?
Yeah, usually shelters are composite materials, also say that colored stone on the ground, and you could paint the shelter or match the water tank. I mean, you know, there's, there's, I mean, you've heard of the monopane towers that make it look like a tree. Quite frankly, you know, in an area, in industrial area with two water tanks and a tree that 175-foot pine tree would look, there's nothing near that with, those type of installations within the APA, you know, buried against a hillside, then with a 50-foot site with some fake branches, it makes some more sense, but when you're in an industrial area and it's two water tanks down in the open, it's at that height, we're proposing, it doesn't make any, any sense to do that.
Except that when you're talking about an industrial, it may be an industrial space, but in a village this size, it's really an entirely residential village. You're going to have neighbors who are going to be looking at this tower pretty much every time they look up in the air.
Yeah, I mean, it's understandable, I mean, it's not like you're a mile off in the middle of nowhere. I mean, it's certainly, you are contiguous to a residential area, there's no way to make these, these towers invisible. You know, they are, you know, decent sized structures, but it's mitigated by the fact that you already have structures that are there, of course, even more of a girth, so to speak, so this is something that...
But you'll find that most places, even with very restrictive zoning and planning, are very accepting of water tanks, not necessarily quite so accepting of cell phone towers.
Yeah, I mean, it depends, yeah, it depends on the community, water tanks generally, a lot of times they're smacked out in a little residential area, a lot of times they've been there for a long time, they do service the people. I would argue that cell phones are almost a necessity today, but water is something that is absolute necessity, you can't live without, so, I mean, people look at that and weigh the, weigh the differences on that, but. I can tell you that there's lots of water tank sites that have three or four carriers on them that are in the middle of very nice homes, residential areas. There's a lot of areas that have towers right next to water tanks. It's not a foreign concept.
It's weird in the future, it's just the way it is. Anybody else got any more questions?
What about security required at your facility? Any concerns about that?
We fence in the compound, the shelters, I mean, they're locked, there's barbed wire, or those, not prison barbed wire, but you know them.
Like white wire, just got around their place.
There's six oh high chain fences, they're, they're locked. There's usually a motion light on the, on the shelter, so if anyone tries to jump in, the light goes off. The shelters, I believe, are alarmed if anyone tried to throw a bar their way inside the shelter area, I've never seen that happen. I mean, if someone really wants to jump a fence and get into the compound, they can do it, it's not a, I mean, just no different than they can jump most fences and get into a person's yard or compound. The tower, multiple towers that are climbing pegs, are usually like the first 20 feet or so, there's not the pegs on there, so if someone gets in, it's not like they can, usually they can't climb the tower. If someone really, really wanted to do it, because they, there's always, they can do it.
And you mentioned, in terms of those, the two options that you had presented, if another carrier, I kind of missed what you said at the beginning of your presentation, you were going through the advantages of doing this, one of them being that the antenna would not be on the water tank, the other one being that there would be opportunities for other carriers, but then I, maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought you said something about if, if Verizon was successful, the opportunities for other carriers would be limited, is that what you said, or I misunderstand that?
I think the, the tank itself, because of the, the way it was designed, I mean, it's a great tank, I mean, for, it's a well, very well-built, beautiful water tank as far as water tank go, but it's the type of design where, even Verizon, we looked at the Six Ways of Sun, that how can we run coax, you know, these big cables inside, and I think if Verizon went on it, on the tank, I think it would be hard put to get, if Sprint comes by next year and says, we really want to go on the water tank, I think it would be hard put because of the limit, the limitations of the space on the tank. And I don't think it's impossible, but now you're going to start really making the tank look sloppy.
So you were referring to the water tank at that time?
Yeah.
Okay, but let's talk about the other carriers who might be using the tower and their requirements that they would need then for ground space. You mentioned that with option two, you felt that the village would have more flexibility because there would be more control in an agreement with the carrier as opposed to going through Verizon?
Yeah, Verizon, if another, if, we'll use Sprint as an example, if they come, you know, a year, tower's built for a year, Sprint wants to go on the tower, they would, they would contact Verizon most likely first. Verizon lets other people on the tower, I've worked for Sprint, I've gone on Verizon towers, then they would have to deal with the village directly and say, okay, we're putting our tenants on Verizon's tower, but we need to lease a 10 by 20 space, I'm just using that as a, as a typical number. And the village would have to negotiate at least separately with Sprint for X dollars a month. So they would be dealing directly with, with Sprint for their rent, instead of dealing, going everything through Verizon.
So with the option one that you had presented, it would be, would the village have any control as to whether or not there's additional ground space that gets leased?
Well, if Verizon leased a 50 by 50, and T-Mobile or Sprint came along, they would probably just go inside Verizon 50 by 50, pay Verizon X amount of dollars a month, and the village would get a few hundred dollars a month for that. But the village wouldn't, it wouldn't be any additional land, the village would have no, they wouldn't have to deal with another carrier. I mean, sometimes it's more preferable because it's less management on the village's side.
But with option two, they would not be within your enclosure? Or could they be regardless?
We would probably just put in a, just lease the area and show it on the lease that we're just leasing the equipment and the tower, and maybe give a little fence around it, but if someone else comes on, they would have to deal directly with the, with the village for their ground space.
Does that require additional height on the tower itself to supply more antenna speeds?
We, I think we would build it adequate enough so if someone else came on, that they'd go right below Verizon. Usually Verizon is say at 175 feet, another carrier could go at 165, 155, and so on.
That might actually be something to consider, would be to go a little higher initially so that other carriers could come in before, because you'll only be able to go as low as, until you hit the water tank, because nobody's... because nobody's gonna go low enough that the other antenna will shoot right outside of the water tank.
Because you see, a lot of, like, you have certain zoning or planning boards, a lot of times they'll, a carrier will come in like Verizon and they'll say, "Okay, you can only build the tower to ninety feet, ten or twenty feet over the tree line", and what happens when the second, or especially the third carrier tries to come in, now all of a sudden they're below the trees, and I've seen it actually, you'll see some areas where there's actually two towers side by side, because once you start going below the tree line, or if you're blocked by another structure like the water tank or building, it really, it really affects the signal in a major way.
Any other questions, Board?
Do you have any data on the, on what Brian asked you in terms of health risks? You mentioned other communities, do you have, you collected any data?
Absolutely, we can do a full, there's, we can do a full study. Um, it's not, not hard to do, we actually let, most of the time do a zoning process, we, we usually provide it for the, an N D study, right, or a health and safety study, that just outlines a little bit about what that's not a problem. I mean, our, our, and I know there's been a few curveballs through the process, the tank versus a new tower, a couple different proposals in front of you. Um, you know, what we're looking for at this point, it doesn't have to be this minute, but, you know, after we leave or the next meeting, just to kind of conceptually get an agreement and concept that this is where we're, you know, this is the direction we want to take, so we can, I know your attorneys already looked at the lease and didn't have, I actually have to provide you a new lease because the one was a specific water tow, water tower lease. Um, it's a, uh, basically the same lease, but it's just a little bit more specific to building a tower. Uh, and it, it might be even an option in land lease where Verizon makes an option out through its diligence period, and the village gets some compensation for that. Um, but that's all we need, then, you know, the village, as you've seen there, is any drawings, anything that, you know, we're getting copied on and improving that.
Board, any other questions? If it's not, well, we thank Joe and we'll be in touch.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate if you have any follow-up questions or anything you need, certainly reach out to me.
I got your business card.
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd really appreciate your time this evening.
Well, thank you. Anybody else wish to rest the board at this time they do so? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, public comments, minutes of the previous meeting of May fifth. They all have copies, Board? Is there any additions or deletions?
Mega motion to accept the, uh, minutes of the meeting of May fifth, two thousand eight. Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those who favor the vote, please sign a bye. Aye? Those opposed? No. No, I have copies of the bills, is there any addition or deletions, Artson?
No, there is not.
Thank you, make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? No discussion, all those who favor both, I'll use the sign of aye. Aye? Those opposed, motion carried, correspondence.
The first letter I have is from the Clinton County Real Property Office. It's from Miranda Major, she did data collection. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself, my name is Miranda Major. I am employed by the Clinton County Real Property Office as a Senior Assessment Control Examiner. I will be out in the town of Champlain, Village of Champlain, and the Village of Rouse's Point collecting data for the Champlain Assessing Office. As part of my duties, I will be not only collecting new construction, but also going parcel to parcel, taking pictures of the structures on the parcels to attach to the property record cards at the town office. I wanted to take the time to let you know of my duties in the case that a resident approaches you and asks why there is someone taking pictures of their house. The name, the number to contact, if anybody has any questions, that's just important. The next letter I have came from Elaine Clodier, uh, to the mayor and board of trustees. This letter is to advise you that as the last regent of the Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court Patricia Number nine sixty-two, I am officially donating to the Village of Rouse's Point for historical purposes the following: ten books of minutes of the meetings, nine books of financial ledgers, two books of mortuary certificates, regent's gavel, officer's dress gloves, official court Patricia seal, awards, various blank forms, letterhead newsletters, booklets, programs, et cetera, photos, history of the court. If a request to borrow any of the Catholic Daughters items is made by the acting parish priest of St. Patrick's Church, it is my wish that he be granted full access to all that is listed above. All items have been collected and delivered to the village historian Donna Racine by Mr. Ben Arnold.
Thank you.
Received the, a letter from Andrew Urt. He's the president of the Dodge Memorial Library. Please advise the village board at their upcoming meeting that the library trustees at their ninth, April ninth, two thousand eight, meeting approved in plan of Geraldine Favreau to be a substitute for any staff member who may not be able to work assigned hours. She will substitute for all the library staff only if none of the non-scheduled staff cannot fill in for a regular staff member who cannot fulfill assigned hours. She will be paid using the money that would be forfeited by the staff member who needs to be substituted for. So there's just no money left there.
That's your information.
And then I did get a copy of resignation. Um, I am sending more, spending more of the year in Florida these days where I would like to take my name off the list of library clerks. This way you will be able to train someone in time for your new automation project. I have enjoyed the time I spent working in the library. Thank you for your giving me the opportunity, and that was from George Mars. He resigned from the position.
Great to see you, though.
Okay, the next item I have is, uh, from Montgomery Post Number nine twelve, the American Legion. American Legion Montgomery Post nine twelve is planning a flag burning ceremony on Memorial Day, May twenty-sixth, two thousand eight, at our post home at twenty-nine Pratt Street. I think that date may be wrong. It could be at two thousand seven. But it may be on Monday, I'm not really sure.
It is.
We respectfully request an exemption from the ordinance prohibiting outside burning for the purpose of properly disposing of unserviceable flags. And that's from Hector Crawford, Commandant.
I need a motion on that, too, Wes.
I'll make a motion to allow the American Legion to do the flag burning ceremony?
Moved by trustee Pinefield, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those who favor the vote, please sign a bye. Aye? Those opposed, motion carried.
And the next item I received was from the New York State Conference of Mayors on the planning and zoning summer schools for two thousand and eight. And there appears to be a schooling in Queensberry Town Hall of July twenty-third, and the cost for each school is sixty dollars per person. And their space is limited, so as soon as they get them in, I believe last year we approved like twelve or fifteen people because they wanted the zoning board, the planning board, anybody else that wished their time, so.
Need a motion to allow planning and zoning to attend if they can't reach to do so?
I believe Mike Tatcher wants to attend also, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the planning or zoning board to attend. Second, remember, second.
Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
We should just check if, if Mike wants to go, whether or not he's registered yet through the town.
Okay.
Because this is also the Association of Towns.
He won't be registered in the town, at there right now, town does not get this.
This is Nikon, so.
This is Nikon.
Well, in conjunction with the Association of Towns of the state of New York, so it's right on here.
I'll check, I'll just check.
Just so that we don't double up.
Yeah, well, I understand.
Do you want to just approve him to go also if you, if you can?
Sure.
So eleven, up to eleven?
Perhaps it would be nice that the towns would share in the cost for Mike?
So, Bill.
Mr. Cooper, you wanna go to this? John, I love it.
Hopefully share in services.
I love it. Go ahead, Wes.
I'll ask him tomorrow to check, to see if he'll take it.
Tell him to, uh, check with our supervisor.
Because I believe that part of what we entered into the agreement with, there was supposed to be some training money in his contract, so we ought to check on that.
So, so are you still approving him to attend with that understanding, or?
Well, it's, like Kelly says, it's part of the contract, because it's part of training, and so...
Well, we're gonna prove it, we're gonna prove it.
Check, check this all out.
Check it all out, yeah.
So you'll, you'll pull the eleven to attend, and if you can, I'll check on the training for him?
Sure.
I have that page. I don't have that, I don't have that, that's fine. I missed that one.
See, you didn't believe me, Charles.
I believe you, but I just, I, I can't believe the conference of mayors, I can't believe, no, but I can't believe the conference of mayors actually joining with the Association of Towns because they, they're like this most of the time.
Maybe they have a lot of shared services like we do up here, we never know.
Maybe, catch it on.
That's right. Sure, sure, like.
Okay, motion made. Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those who favor the vote, please sign a bye. Aye? Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Reported by board of trustees and the mayor. The only thing I have on my agenda tonight is a discussion of Verizon Tower. Uh, I don't know if the board wants to discuss this any further at this point, or if they want to wait till the next meeting, or what. Um, if we agree to do this, then they, you know, they're gonna have to come back here with all the plans and everything else, so.
Right? Well, we can discuss it if you'd like to, or you want to...
Well, but I'm just saying.
You want to have it at some other meeting, or what?
It doesn't matter to me.
We probably discussed it when I missed last week.
No, it wasn't touched, I asked them, discussion.
The next step would be to either go with it or deny it, right?
Well, I would assume that before they could actually do anything, that we would have to formulate a lease that Tom Renee would then have to fight off.
Oh, yeah, everything would have to go through the attorney. Yeah, there's no way that we...
Well, maybe, I don't...
Dave?
They're, they're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars, I, you know, maybe not as much, but they're talking about that, to have coverage for the door of the yard, but I think it's, that's it.
You heard the man talk.
Yeah, they're filling in the area, that's what they're doing there.
They're filling in, I have, I have spot, it's funny coverage, so maybe for them, it's a, it's a way to advertise that out in the northeast corner of New York State, they have coverage.
Well, you know what'll happen, John, John.
Five hundred thousand dollars, and other people will...
You, you know what's gonna happen, once they find out that everybody's got, you've got coverage, you, I foresee, it's like, we have Nextel, and as much as I like Nextel with the clock around, right? Wouldn't it be better for us to go through Verizon, because eventually they're gonna have it all the way down the arthway? They're only, they're only gotten approval for two towers.
I know, I know they have it out west, yeah.
And, I mean, it's...
They must have heard that Rouse's Point was up and coming then. Cell service, our residents are obviously very important to them.
And they want to make sure that their compound is gonna fit into our design guidelines, so we'll make sure that the building that they put up there is...
I mean, they're gonna have to go, they're gonna have to go to the zoning and planning board, you know, and get all them approvals and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I've done it with quite a few people, and they want it.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna see any eternal lit, so.
How many people work at Wyatt?
Six hundred, eight hundred right now.
So you're talking eight hundred, and, and, you know, so, I mean, that's another...
You know, I'm surprised that the coverage doesn't get all the way to Champlain.
That's it.
So you're... But they have a tower in Champlain, with a tower in Champlain and a tower here, they keep, they'll do separate.
Technology, John.
I guess.
I don't think anyone is debating the fact, I don't think you're finding anyone who's gonna stand up and say, "I don't want better cell coverage", it's, the only question is whether or not we're doing it in the way that's the best for the village. And it may be best for people with cellphones, but it may not be best for the village. And I, I guess, I'm not convinced that those two things are exactly the same. So, it's, you know, it's very hard to sit here and say, you don't, I'm certainly not gonna say I don't want better cell coverage. I think you're right, I think a lot of people, Bumper and Brian, I think you guys are right. A lot of people do want better cell coverage. But the question is, have we done the best that we can do on behalf of the village?
Well, we can't drag our feet any longer, I don't think. I don't think we're gonna get much of a better deal.
Well, our deal just got reduced by, you know, a third, from last meeting to this meeting.
What are we getting right now, nothing?
Well, but that, that doesn't matter, I mean, they haven't built the tower yet. So, you, you know, you want, you, I just want to make sure that, that, because the other thing I mentioned to George this afternoon that I consider to be quite a big deal, is the fact that we are leasing public land, not to a nonprofit, but to a business which stands to profit from it, and I think that's a pretty weighty precedent. It, it's something to think about, this public land that we have, that we're gonna be leasing to a private contractor, basically, for the purposes of helping them make money. And, and obviously...
Well, like I told you, Kelly, there's other communities that do it, we came to contact them and see what their problems were.
Right, because if they're willing to spend close to a half a million dollars to set up this tower in this building, the thousand dollars a month they're paying the Village of Rouse's Point is not very much. Obviously, they see the potential for an awful lot of revenue.
Yeah, that's...
And so, that has been my only point in both of the meetings prior to now. Not that I'm against improving cell coverage, that's not the point, there are two things. And, and the, to me, the biggest one is allowing a private company to lease village property for the purposes of their increasing their revenue, and are we doing that the right way for the village? And I don't know, maybe we are, maybe we aren't.
No, we could check with other people, but these people...
Well, at that location, what, I, I kind of, I would agree with, in principle with Kelly, but in that particular location, we have a commercial property, it's a dead end.
Exactly.
We got a railroad property that's on the other side, and really, with, what, what else could we use the space for, I guess? And, you know, if we, if we had a gas pipeline and it had to come through...
Same thing.
Would that have been an area where it would have come through underground, come through the town of Champlain?
It's already there.
And it's there.
It's there.
And they do have a station there, don't they, have some kind of a station?
Metering station for Wyatt, right there. But the, the gas line, if, if the village decided to put gas in, or allow them to come in here with gas, that's where they'd come from, that's a four hundred, I think it's four hundred pound PSI line in there.
And we, and we'd have to do it underground to...
And, and, and all these wire units?
Say that we had a company that was gonna come through, we'd have to go through the village with this.
Yeah, we'd all, we'd, we'd have to get them, we'd have to get them right away through the easement. In fact, if we approved it, we couldn't stop them going in our easements.
So...
By law, I read, found that little question out.
At the location, um, where we, where we're located, it's gonna be north of the water tank, it's almost gonna be a, a dead end anyway, because you've got Wyatt.
Right when you come up by Wyatt, right when you get to the stop sign.
Right on the corner.
It'll be right in front of you.
We're right there.
Probably, maybe they might...
Well, it's after the, almost even with the tank, it'd be pushed back, or, or, back on the line. We will look at it today. I told them, I said, "You see that big hump out there? You gotta stay away from that."
And when you're close to it, I mean, when you're further away, it's gonna be more noticeable than if you're close to it. You know, like people that live actually live on Priscilla or at your apartment.
It's no different than the other water tower there, it's the same thing. We've got a water tower, we're not used to it.
Basically, the water tower's gonna, water tower's gonna...
Wyatt, I've been in there myself, basically.
So, they're both gonna be the same, I thought.
What do you want to do, Board?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to allow Verizon to build a tower and build Rouse's Point.
I would, uh, change that motion. I would authorize Horizon to go ahead with engineering and studies, to allow them to build a tower.
Let me, uh, modify that motion. I'd like a motion, no, no, you're right, that's, that's the most correct way to do it, too.
Yeah.
Because the longer we hold on to this, it's only gonna be two more weeks, two more weeks, either we're gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it. So I'll make a motion to allow Verizon to go ahead to do the studying, the preemptive, or what do you call it, preliminary studies to go forward to build a, uh...
Cellphone tower.
Cellphone tower, in Rouse's Point. I'll put that part of the motion.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any more discussion? No more discussion? Yes, I said.
That's not, all you're doing is just approving them to allow to, uh...
Yeah, they gotta come...
You're not, you're not, you're not specif- specifying any specific area or anything.
Mike should probably, yeah, put that in the, in our village water tank, property at our village water tank.
The location being at the northeast corner...
Is it the northeast or northwest?
Northeast.
Northeast.
The northeast corner of the village property where the water tower is, on Academy Street.
Any other discussion? Is not, all the favor of the... If not, all the favor vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carried. Okay, next thing on my agenda is, uh, Artson, we're going to need your help on this one. Uh, we've gotten three quotes on removing the asbestos from that little building down there that we own. Uh, you know what I'm talking about? And a low code of two two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, our engineer recommends that we take that quote, and I don't know where we can get the money from. Can you find some somewhere? Because it's not in the budget. Once that's, once the asbestos out of there, Brian should take the rest of the building down with no problem.
What's it, the asbestos, it's in, just the roof?
Well, just to tell you, the roof material, half of the roof, because half the roof is tin, half the roof is a shaggle. And it's bloody in the windows. That's asbestos, that's the only asbestos that's in the building. So they have to take the windows out and cover them. And it can go to regular length though, believe it or not, but there's still asbestos. And the dogs and all these people went through it, so after we had that asbestos checked out.
All it does is raise costs, though.
Absolutely. You ever hear such a thing, the bloody in the windows?
Yeah, I have to do that, most of the windows are done back in.
Oh, two.
Nineteen hundreds, or nineteen hundreds, or even up to nineteen fifty.
Asbestos is the bloody.
I remember when she wanted to be burnt out in the development up there.
Yeah.
She had old windows in her house, and that miss was going to take the thing, take the house and clean it up. She had to go through that whole mess.
So there it is, I need a motion to go ahead with it.
Oh, yeah. I wonder if he told you that, yeah.
Okay.
Did he say he had the money, or?
I don't, he said he was looking underneath the chair.
He was looking at Brian, see if he had any money.
Brian.
He was looking underneath his chair.
Artson, maybe you got some in your shoe there.
Well.
Well, I mean, I got to look at the budget, I mean, I can't give you an answer now, but I mean, I'm sure we can find it somewhere.
Thank you.
It's good enough for me.
All right, I need a motion.
That's the guy's for Brian, and they got a half a million.
To accept a quote, to have the asbestos removed from the building at one fifteen Lake Street.
With.
Catamount Environmental, environmental.
Catamount Environmental, for two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any other discussion?
Do we know who Catamount Environmental?
Doug does. Doug does. Doug does for all we do.
I just can't know.
They're from Wilmington, Maryland.
Or you got to write this.
All right, any other discussion? I have a motion made, seconded. All is favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, the only item on my agenda tonight is.
Your favorite thing to do.
I know, I'm not going to make a just big long speech on it. We got to write these electric bills off. The money has come down, last year it was about eight thousand, it's come down to.
Five thousand.
Right, so lowest amount since two thousand and three.
Lowest.
I'm down one thousand six hundred and thirty-five, one hundred and forty-three cents.
There.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to write off the bad debts, the electric bad debts. And you, well, give me the figure again here, that'll help. Here's what I got here.
Fifty-five oh four.
Fifty-five oh four, fifty-four. So I'll make a motion to.
Should we pick time to read the name?
No.
I like to put it in paper, we won't do that.
Publish it.
Read them off, John.
Now the way to town. The policy, oh, go ahead, you got a motion.
Okay, yeah, I'll make that motion to write these debts off. I don't like to do it, but we have to do it.
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion?
Yes, what is the, some of these are extensive, what is the limit? Is it a thirty day limit, sixty day limit? Would we, when the person is in arrears on their payment of their electricity, when, at what time do we notify them? And can we reduce that time at all, right? Is it a thirty day, is it after the first month?
We can shut them off after their forty-five days in arrears.
Forty-five day.
And that's only between April fifteenth and October fifteenth.
Yeah, in between there, you can't do anything.
Can't do anything, so these I would assume are like.
Because like one of, the only really two high ones are nine sixty-seven and seven forty-five. Jerk says, why can't we put low limit on these people and try to, you know? And we see they're getting up there.
I would I would assume some of these are over the winter months.
Yeah, they're all over the winter months.
This person, or persons that are here.
These people, some of these people skip out, landlords won't even tell us, and they're gone.
Yeah, the people that skip, the remotes.
So I I understand that, but you take that nine hundred and sixty-seven. In the middle of January, they got a two hundred, two hundred dollar bill. And then it comes down to the fifteenth of February, uh, they got another two hundred dollars. That's when the low limit should go on, after that forty-five days, no questions asked, babe, you put it on.
No more forty-five.
And when it comes April fifteenth, you go up and you pull the damn meter. I mean, it it sounds hard, those, but damn it all, every one of us in this room is paying for this.
Costs us a hundred dollars a week to write this off. I mean, it's better than it was.
These are all, any commercial debts? These are all resident?
No, they're commercial, no, no, W W B I T V.
Eight dollars, forty-seven dollars. I mean, it's commercial, but. Uh, any other discussion, Board?
No.
Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And a mayor vote, aye.
Not nearly, but.
That's it for you?
Uh, yes, the only thing I want to just say real quick is, the other day when we had a little disturbance in the village over the weekend, we had trouble with cell coverage. I'm standing next to Sergeant Patterson, and we're trying to do emergency traffic over the cell phone. In some places we could get in, some places we could get out. So there is a problem, obviously, with the cell.
Do you have a Verizon phone?
I didn't ask him what kind he had, but I had a Nextell, and I said, here, use mine.
Uh, on that, on that subject, now that you brought it up, uh, nobody wants to give credit where credit's due, but I was out of town. Trustee Jefferson called me. I got back Sunday, and I was told that the Rouse's Point Fire Department did themselves proud at that fire. They had a fire knocked down in three minutes. And there's a couple of people, Eric Miller and Ryan Pelkey, had a lot to do with that. And they're, you know, they, you know, it's time that accolades are given instead of St. Police getting total coverage for everything that happened up there.
We find a radio. There was a radio missing.
Saturday night.
Wait a minute, I have no.
Fire department, or?
No, he said it was a military unit. Get up to turn the power off real quick, and they thought it was on the corner of Naples and Chapman, and it had already been lost.
I haven't heard anything.
You find it. Must be found.
That is, that's it, okay, trusty Kelly, trusty Kelly, trusty Kelly. Sorry, yeah.
It's okay. It hasn't bothered me a bit. I have only one item to act on tonight. We are not going to have the executive session that was reported on the agenda because of the lack of information at this point, hopefully more information.